The Minister of Information and Culture, Alajila Mohammed, asked Nigerians to support the Bouhari administration in his pursuit of an agricultural revolution to boost production, warning that Nigerians should not expect any support from outside countries in government's efforts of self-sufficiency. Speaking at a special town hall meeting on agriculture in Dusse, Gagawa State on Monday, the minister asked Nigerians to disregard the report that Nigerian imported 100,000 metric tonnes of rice more this year, even though the country has reduced the importation by 90% as the underwork of detractors who are bent on dampening the resolve of government in exiting food importation. Alajila Mohammed said, "The present administration has made a giant strides in the area of agriculture and commanded the efforts of rice growers and farmers in Nigeria." The minister explained that the essence of town hall meetings was to enhance people's participation in governance and deepen democracy, stating that the platform provides opportunity for the administration to showcase its achievements and success stories to the people.
I welcome you all to this special town hall meeting on agriculture and agricultural value chain, holding here in Dusse, Gagawa State. This special hall meeting is dedicated to agriculture and agricultural value chain. And I think there is no better place for this than Gagawa State, especially having seen what we saw this morning. It is this, this is the third in the series of special town hall meetings which we will be organising between now and the 2019 general elections to showcase the achievements of the Bouhari administration. Overall, this is the 15th edition of the town hall meetings which was launched by the Minister of Information and Culture in Lagos on April 25, 2016. The town hall meetings have revolutionised the way the government communicates with the people. In the first instance, town hall meetings offer a two-way communication system. The government gets a platform to give account of its stewardship to the people. And the people get the opportunity to interrogate such stewardship and also make necessary inputs in a no-holds-barred setting. It enhances the participation of citizens in governance, thus deepening democracy. There is no doubt that the Bouhari administration has made a giant stride in the area of agriculture, which is widely regarded as one of the success stories of this administration. It is in that context that Nigerians should see the recent fake news that Nigeria imported 400,000 metric tonnes more of rice than the quantity it imported in 2017. The report, quoting the 2018 United States Department of Agriculture World Markets and Trade Report, also posited that Nigeria's local rice production is dropping. When the figures were challenged, they could not provide any empirical grants for the report. Fortunately, the Central Bank of Nigeria has debunked this report, saying the volume of rice importation into Nigeria in metric tonnes declined drastically in 2018. Figures obtained from India and Thailand, both dominant rice exporters to Nigeria, indicate that as of September this year, Thailand had so far exported only 5,161 metric tonnes of rice to Nigeria, while India sold only 426 metric tonnes as of July. Let's recall that as of September 2015, rice imported from Thailand alone was 644,131 metric tonnes. But by September 2017, the importation from Thailand had fallen to a mere 22,000 metric tonnes, thanks to the efforts of our local rice growers. So those who claimed that Nigeria imported 400,000 metric tonne of rice more this year have not been truthful. Today, I can assure you that if you go to any of our rice milling factories, you'll find queues some as long as two kilometres of trailers waiting to discharge and offload body rice. However, please permit me to alert Nigerians to the reality out there. In pursuing our agricultural revolution, which will ultimately lead to self-sufficiency in the national staples, we should not expect accolades and support from outside, especially from countries that have either so been the main exporters of food items such as rice to Nigeria. Every nation pursues its national interest and it is definitely not in their interest for Nigeria to produce what it consumes because it means you will no longer import from such countries.
In his presentation at the town hall meeting in Gagawa State, the Minister of Agriculture, Chief Hau Diogbe, stated the resolve of government to make Nigerian farmers become very strong, rich and independent legitimately, saying the rice revolution has given life back to the farmers. The Agriculture Minister explained the reduction of interest rates on lending to farmers to 9%, which has ignited a revolution in agriculture in the country. Chief Diogbe informed the meeting that the reform of the Bank of Agriculture, BOE, would be completed by the end of the year with interest rates on the lending to farmers reduced to 5%, while farmers will also be shareholders of the bank.
Our development efforts for many, many years have not yielded much fruit, not because governments have not tried, but because people have forgotten something, a very important thing they've forgotten, that a tree, a tree is only as strong as its roots. And that the roots of any country are in the rural areas. We have tended to forget the rural people in this country and forgot, forgotten their basic industry, which is agriculture. We have forgotten our history of the first republic, when Nigeria was a major exporter of food to the rest of the world. When we dominated the sesame seed market, groundnut market, hides and skins, when Nigeria accounted for 40% of the world's consumption of palm oil and cocoa, all that disappeared over a period. From 2015 to now, things have happened. When we came in and launched the Anchor Borrowers Programme in November 2015, there were five million members of the Rice Growers Association. And they were not happy members because nobody was eating their rice. People complained the rice was full of stones. And so the Central Bank and ourselves got together and said, "What do we do?" The first thing we recognised was that one of the biggest obstacles to growth in this country has been an outrageous interest rate. From 1986, when our economic disaster began through the structural adjustment programme, interest rate went up to 25%, 30%. And I kept asking, "How can anybody produce anything profitably at the interest rate of 25%? How can a farmer grow rice if he or she borrows at 25% and processes and puts in the market to compare with what they are importing from Thailand and India, when in those countries the interest rate is 3%?" Nobody was prepared to listen. So the Anchor Borrowers Programme came down with 9%. The first outing was 40 billion naira to farmers. That money within one year turned over a paddy worth 294 billion. Just 40 billion in, 294 billion out in rice. It proved a point that if we can reduce interest rates in this country appreciably for agriculture and industry, Nigeria will have no business complaining of poverty, unemployment or hunger. By merely reducing interest rates to 9%, great things are happening. In Gagawa alone, you have close to 21 large rice mills now. Some operating, some about to be commissioned. We have seen samples of the rice. To reproduce that rice, you need farmers. The farmers out on the field are busy. They are making money. This year, 56,000 people went on the hutch. Almost 90% of them were farmers who paid their way and paid the way of their wives. They did not need to go to a governor to ask for tickets. And what exactly does that mean for us? A revolution is taking place. The farmer is becoming strong, independent and rich. So Mohammed Bouhari, through this philosophy, has proved the point very clearly and nobody can argue with it. Reduce interest rates, give inputs to farmers, mobilise Nigerians and Nigeria will get back to where she was and even excel. And on that score, I have better news too. We are currently reforming the Bank of Agriculture. The Bureau of Public Enterprise has almost completed its work. We are going to restructure the bank. Farmers will become shareholders of that bank. And we are looking at bringing the interest rate ultimately to 5% for agriculture.
The Minister of Water Resources, Engineer Suleman Adamu, at the town hall meeting, stated the resolve of the present administration to reposition the river basins in Nigeria and restore agricultural extension services. Engineer Adamu emphasised the need to transform and sustain agriculture in Nigeria and also revitalise some of the irrigation facilities in the country. According to him, the federal government needs the support of the states to achieve more in this sector.
My role in agriculture and the role of the Federal Ministry of Water Resources is barely complementary. But complementary in a very special way because there is no way you can have agriculture without water. We have been blessed in the last three years with a lot of rain, but we also know that the rains have a specific period. And for us to be food sufficient, to be sufficient in food in this country, we must be farming all year round. And there is no way we can succeed without developing the necessary water and irrigation infrastructure for that. And that's where we come in. And one of the key things we discovered was that for the Bouhari agricultural revolution to succeed, the river basins must be repositioned totally. There is no option. Two decades or so, the river basins could not even produce one extra hectare for irrigation in this country. Basically, the 300,000 hectares or so of formal irrigation that we have were developed by previous administrations, out of which only 70,000 hectares have been operational when we came into office. So one of the key things we have, we decided to do as part of our roadmap of redeveloping the water resources sector for 2016 to 2030 is to revitalise the river basin development authorities. And we'll be working on that. First of all, we have now professionalised the river basin development authorities. We are round pegs in round holes. Our management are people that are experienced either in engineering, in economic development or in water resources management or agriculture. We have restored agricultural extension services. I was in the bus and the Minister of Agri was telling me that they are getting short of agriculture extension workers. And I told him that we have quite a pool in the river basins. And this is one of the areas that will synergise, among other areas that we've been working on for a long time. The river basins, if you look at the budgets from 2017 to 2018, are now, the budgets are now focused on rehabilitation of dams, expanding irrigation facilities and providing irrigation inputs to farmers. You know, we have de-emphasised those, you know, non-essential services that they have been forced to do only for short political gains. That's the issue of procurement of motorcycles and all that stuff given them to political supporters. These do not add value, in my view, to agriculture and therefore we've had to move away from that. In addition to that, we have introduced a system of, we started in 2016 with a graduate youth empowerment programme to introduce younger people who otherwise have no other job to do into agriculture, to introduce them into the basics of agriculture. And this has now dovetailed into the Songai model. I believe some of you are aware of the Songai model of sustainable agriculture. So we have started in all the river basins, we have started pilot projects. Some of them are doing two, some three on individual states. And the target is that once we have started, we're going to roll out this Songai system into all the 109 senatorial districts.
The Minister of State for Industry, Trade and Investment, Mrs Aisha Abubaka, in her submission, stated the need for Nigerian exporters to meet the international standard and maintain quality in the packaging of their exports. Mrs Abubaka disclosed that the pre-harvest losses has reduced from 40% to 10%, while organic fertiliser will also be created from the post-harvest losses.
What we do is to collate all your efforts together and try to bring investment into your respective hard work. So we would encourage you first to have formidable associations because that's what the international partners are looking for. They don't look for individual farmers, they look for agricultural commodity associations. And we have funds, like the common funds for commodities in the Netherlands who render such funding. What I just want to talk to you about is that we have also implemented the Nigeria Agriculture and Agro Development Initiative, where we are trying to promote these associations to put hands together to increase their production capacity whereby they can export. This is where we have the Global Gap Training Initiative, which is also happening. And I think Gagawa State is now benefiting from both initiatives in this respect. What it is is that we need to be able to build your capacity because they're very sensitive. There are certain standards, international standards, that when you need to export, you have to comply with. And you need to be able to meet those standards. So they teach you what those standards are and they teach you how to package your products for exportation. Well, of course, you know, we're also trying to revive the cotton. The Minister of Agri has mentioned it. We're trying to bring back cotton. We're trying to bring in heavy investors into the textile companies. It seems like the textile companies in recovering them now might be a major challenge because what we have on the outside are high-technology textile companies. But we hope that by the time we're able to bring back the farmers, like we have the Ruby Group who is coming in into Kano, Leke and Adia State. And we also have the Velisco, who are also coming into Kaduna, Kasina and Edo State. They would need large hectares of farm cotton for them to be able to feed the huge investment industries that they're also bringing in. We've also done very well in tomatoes. And tomatoes, we now have new investors coming in. We have smaller investors coming in. We have the GB Foods who are investing in the tomato policy. And we have now changed the crating system. We have crates for transporting, which has reduced the harvest loss from 40% to 10%, which increases your farm yields. Then we also have the sugar. And again, Gagawa State has invested in the sugar with the Li Group. We're looking forward to their factory coming up in 2020. And they've assured us that they would work with the timelines that we've set them. And this is a huge investment that is coming into Gagawa State. There are also opportunities for recycling of post-harvest so that you reduce your losses and recycling of food that wastes, leftover foods. And this can also be invested so that you are able to produce fertiliser, organic fertiliser. So instead of throwing away your foods or your post-harvest losses, you can convert this and use them back in your respective farms. And we're also partnering with a lot of the banks. I won't say much because CBN is here, but with Nysel as well. We're encouraging states to also set up their own commodity exchanges so that they're buying off from their farmers so the farmers don't have to incur losses on their products. The Federal Produce Inspectorates have also recruited 120 new graduates and have trained them and they're being posted out. And Gagawa State is also going to benefit from this and the Megatary border, where there'll be inspection produce coming in and out. Basically, it's for us to encourage, first encourage production and then what to do with your production because the value addition, that is where the money is. You need to be able to process. So inasmuch as we're looking for the big investors, we're also looking for the smaller inspectors. So I'm very happy with what Gagawa State is doing with the cluster farming project that they have on because we need to encourage small, small processing centres that can now feed into the bigger centres. And that way we have a continuous value chain ongoing.
However, the representative of the CBN governor, Mr Olatunde Akundee, stated that the bank has disbursed over 60 billion naira to smallholder farmers and has supported 15 different commodities under the Anchor Borrowers Programme.
In the past four years specifically, the Central Bank has been very active in agriculture, especially with the agricultural revolution of the government. But as you'll expect, the Central Bank is a conservative organisation, institution. So ideally, you like to feel the impact of the Central Bank. But today, I'll tell you just the brief of our interventions, what we're doing. The flagship, I'm sure everybody knows and heard about, is the Anchor Borrower Programme. The Anchor Borrower Programme was launched in November 17, 2015 by Mr President. And since then, the Central Bank has supported over 850,000 smallholder farmers. The Central Bank, the Central Bank has disbursed over 160 billion naira under the Anchor Borrower Programme. I think why the Anchor Borrower Programme is very popular is because the programme targets specifically smallholder farmers. There are a lot of other programmes that the Central Bank has done, targeting large-scale commercial farmers, targeting small and medium enterprises. But this is specifically for smallholder farmers. And it's not just rice. Everybody, when everybody talks about the Anchor Borrower, we talk about rice, rice. Yes, under the Anchor Borrower, the rice financing in terms of the value, in terms of the number of farmers, is about 80%. But under the Anchor Borrower, was supported 15 different commodities. 15. We have supported cassava, we have supported cotton, fish, groundnut, maize, poultry, soybeans, wheat, carthu, ginger, sorghum, allpalm, tomato and cocoa under the Anchor Borrower. Another programme that the Central Bank is supporting is the Presidential Fertiliser Initiative, which my excellency is the chairman. I won't talk too much about it. It has already been mentioned. The Central Bank is a key funder to that programme. And we all know that fertiliser is being supplied at 5,500 naira. It has saved a lot of foreign exchange in the country. It has revived over 20 blending plants in Nigeria. Another programme that we are doing, that we're supporting, is the PADI aggregation scheme. The PADI aggregation scheme typically is for rice millers, local rice millers that are members of RIPAN. RIPAN is a rice millers association of Nigeria to assess as working capital to mop up PADI from the rice farmers and to be able to mill and expand their capacity utilisation.
Earlier in his welcome address, the executive governor of Gagawa State, Alajila Mohammed Badaru Abubaka, saluted the ministers for their commitment in bringing positive change to the people. The governor stated that the 80% of state's population engage in agriculture and thus his administration has made agriculture his top priority. He said, "The state's intervention on the farmers' plight starts from planting to harvesting and pledge to continue to sustain the agricultural sector in collaboration with relevant stakeholders to boost self-sufficiency in food production."
Most warmly welcome all invited guests to this unique event. And indeed, for the second time, welcome our honourable ministers and salute their unflinched commitment to the APC agenda of positive change. I thank you for organising this town hall meeting and for bringing us together to engage in an often frank and honest discussion in order to listen. Distinguished invited guests, let me at this juncture highlight on our modest contribution in Gagawa State. As I mentioned earlier, where an agrarian state was over 80% of the population engaged in agriculture. With the declaration by Mr President of the administration's intention to devastate the economy, the Gagawa State government has taken up the challenge and vigorously pursue the development of entire agriculture value chain as its topmost priority. In our desire to launch our agricultural revolution, government introduced a cluster farming system involving grouping of smallholder farms, cultivating contiguous farmlands of specified size with particular crop. This system, which aggregated inputs supply and introduced accountability to extension services, has generated higher crop yield per hectare for various crops, which include rice, sesame seed, wheat, groundnut etc. thereby repositioning Gagawa State as a mega rice, sesame seed and habesco's producing state. This yield increase This yield increase was followed up by detailed value chain mapping, which identify intervention points from planting to harvesting, where government changed the old order by introducing mini-mechanisation using small handheld tools that were given to use who are in turn assigned to clusters or individual farmers to work for a fair fee. This not only provide jobs in planting, harvesting, threshing and milling, but introduced efficiency in the entire cultivation process for additional yield increase, reduced cost of production and a reduction in post-harvest loss by up to 30%. This agricultural revolution by Gagawa State has attracted large and small-scale investors who took the opportunity to interface with an organised and cohesive sector as opposed to individual farmers with attendant inconsistencies in quality and supply. As at today, the state agricultural sector has attracted some of the biggest names in the Nigerian mega-industrial arena with the Nangote Group currently establishing the biggest rice mill in Africa with an insell capacity of 280 tonnes per annum. And several other mega mills at various stages of completion. Other large-scale investors in the sectors includes the Lee Group, which is investing in 12,000 hectares of irrigated sugar plantation to feed a 100, 120,000 tonnes sugar mill with associated production lines of molasses, particle boards, food seasoning and organic fertiliser while generating also 15 megawatts of electricity. Work on Nigeria has encouraged, has been encouraged to establish a sesame cleaning plant that is currently engaging over 12,000 outgrowers, farmer. And the Gagawa State Investment and Property Company has partnered with a Turkish group to set up the first agricultural export terminal in the country licensed by custom. Distinguished guests, it behoves on us as leaders and stakeholders to continue to sustain and improve the sector through this kind of engagement. It is therefore my honour and privilege to once more welcome you all and say happy deliberation. Thank you for listening and God bless us.